Hey folks, it's Doug Thornton with American Medicta. All right, I'm gonna make this short. It's 12:50 at night, I'm tired and I'm drinking coffee. So, something's happening next week, we need to be aware of it. I'm gonna read to you an article from the US Sun, something that one of the listeners Josh sent to me. So, thanks very much brother for sending me this. And of course, it's alien related, so it's gonna be fun. ET Phone Home, UFO Secrets To Be Revealed To US Public Next Week In Historic Hearing. And here's how to watch it. This article is wrote by Tyler Baum. The House of Representatives will hold a public hearing on UFOs and shed light on the galaxy's greatest mysteries. The hearing is set for 10 AM on Tuesday, May 17. The US House Intelligence Committee, it's like an oxymoron at this point. Counterterrorism, counterintelligence and counterproliferation Subcommittee will take the floor and unpack what they know about unexplained sightings for the American public. So before we go any deeper, what do you think they're gonna talk about? Leave that in the comments below, I wanna see it, I wanna read it and I'm gonna respond to you. Because I have some things that I think they're gonna talk about. I think it's gonna be a lot of disinformation. I think it's gonna be a lot of, how would I say this, pulling the rabbit out of the hat trick. I think they're going to unveil things that many of us already knew, many of us already assumed was out there. And they may have one or two shiny pieces of rock for us to pick up and ooh and all that. But I don't think we're gonna get too much out of it, but hey, I may be completely wrong. So, leave it down in the comments, let's talk about this, let's get this, let's get this conversation going here, let's get back in the article. Pentagon officials and intelligence directors will testify. The American public, quote, "The American people expect and deserve their leaders in government and intelligence to seriously evaluate and respond to any potential national security risk." I know it's really late, but I gotta stop myself right there, cuz I'm just now reading this article to you. You wanna come out and tell me stuff about UFOs, unidentified aerial phenomena, aliens, but you won't secure the border, you won't get fentanyl off the street, you won't prosecute people that we in law enforcement would arrest. You let half the country burn down in 2020, then you restricted all of us due to the magical bug. And now you wanna tell me that you're taking national security risk seriously? What about the 2020 election that's still highly contested? Has anyone else seen 2000 Mules? I find it interesting, this bait and switch that our government does all the time. And I know the tricks, I understand them, being a former federal law enforcement. However, this is, this is being done at a particular time. And I'll tell you this, and I want you, I want you guys to hear me when I say this. Nothing that is told to the public by the PR, the representatives of these agencies is ever set on a whim. And nothing like these staged events, cuz they're all gonna be reading from documents, alright? They will have, if you don't know this, they have approved documented speech. They'll be going over cues, they'll be going over what to say, what answers. The congressman will have questions and they'll have answers, and so will whoever it is that's testifying. And we're gonna see a very doctored, a mock speech, more or less, right? The real stuff happens in the closed-door US committees, alright? Those intelligence committees, they'll go closed-door downstairs, that's where they'll have those real conversations. And those real conversations do happen, they do take place. But what we're gonna see tomorrow is gonna be mainly theater. So, consider, when I say that whatever they talk about is approved by the lawyers, it's approved by the agency heads, it's approved by the PR people. They've analyzed most likely what the people are going to say or react. And they're expecting certain reactions. They're expecting this to take the reaction and the talking points, and it's gonna be spread for probably the next month on the news. And then, in between next week and for the next month or two throughout the summer, more disclosure will come out about the UFO stuff. The committee that was created to start the research for the unidentified aerial phenomena, or it's not a committee, excuse me, it's an agency now, with law enforcement powers. So, the Men in Black, right? They're gonna be giving their first testimony to Congress for everything that they have discovered on October 31st, Halloween. Nothing is done on a whim. It's theater, it's theatricality and deception. Powerful agents to the uninitiated, name the movie. That's what we're gonna see. So, when I read stuff like this, I kinda get pissed, because we had a true domestic terror incident for almost all of 2020. And nothing, crickets, if anything, half the politicians approved of it. Half the politicians approve of Ukraine. Half of the politicians approve of what's happening on the border. Half the politicians and over half the governors approve of what China is doing. So let that sink in, and now, let's, let's, let's do our due diligence and consider what the potential national security risks are from UFOs. Cuz you know, they've attacked us lately, right? Let's continue. Let me see. "Oh, especially those who we do not fully understand," Representative Andre Carson said. So that was the end of the speech. I'll just re-say it. "The American people expect and deserve their leaders in government and intelligence to seriously evaluate and respond to any potential national security risk, especially those who we do not fully understand." Yeah, that sounds like a, a big ol' shit sandwich that I'm not gonna believe, because Representative Adam Schiff, Chairman of the House Intelligence Committee, that's like putting the rat in charge of the rat trap manufacturing. He said that the public hearing will break the cycle of excessive secrecy and speculation with truth and transparency. I got some homework for you. Truth, transparency, excessive secrecy. Go to the NationalArchives.com or .gov, NationalArchives.gov, and just type in Roswell, see what you find. You know, the US Air Force, ever since the Roswell Incident, 47, I believe, 1947, they spent almost 30 years doing their best to shut people up, threaten people. Some authors would tell you that they killed and murdered people to hold the dialogue in check. The government would not talk about it, but the government had all the answers to the public's questions. The craft, the bodies, the investigations, the key witness testimonies, eyewitness testimonies. And remember this, when people say, oh, you know, ask that freak over there who saw a saucer, you know, within the realm of law enforcement and then, and court procedure, we use eyewitness testimony to prosecute people, to imprison them. So if your eyewitness testimony is strong enough for law enforcement to get a warrant to arrest somebody, and then strong enough for a district attorney or attorney general to then consider prosecuting somebody in front of a George, or in front of a George, in front of a tired, in front of a judge, or having a jury trial based off of eyewitness testimony. Why do we not believe people who saw Bigfoot, aliens, UFOs, cryptids involved in conspiracy theories? We don't give those people any room or any, any light. We put them in, in the shadow very much, and that's why people don't talk about things like abductions. People don't talk about things like whenever, you know, Bigfoot chased you out of a, out of the woods. I actually have a friend of mine in, along the Red River in between Oklahoma and Texas, who had an experience and encounter with what may or may not have been a Sasquatch. And I definitely do plan on going there for myself. Maybe I can, I can trigger the same encounter. We, we, we put these type of people and their eyewitness testimony off to the side and we demonize them, because within our culture and society, we all, well, we're grownups and we don't believe in this make-believe fairy tale stuff. But yet, you know, look at what's happening with, well, if I talked about it and the fairy tale creatures, I'd get banned from YouTube. But you probably know where I'm going. I just, I don't, I don't. For one thing, Adam Schiff is a traitor to this country, so I don't believe anything he says. But when they say that he's going to break the cycle of excessive secrecy and speculation with truth and transparency, as me and Timothy Albarino were talking about this. Whatever they show us is most likely gonna be man-made. Man-made, it's probably gonna be back engineered, or it's gonna be spliced together with xenotype technology, which would be alien technology, and then our own advanced aerospace technology. Most likely, nuts and bolts craft, that's what we're gonna see, if that's what they disclose to us. It's also pertinent to understand within this conversation that for a period of time, the government also, you know, just recently, not just with the revelation of the ATIP program, the Advanced Aerospace Threat, whatever, whatever program, but also, they disclosed the issue of soft tissue damage to people who were involved with abductions or being near aliens or their craft, the, the UFOs, which included radiation burns, which included actual radiation cancer-related stuff, and then all the way to the very traumatic births. Unexplained and unaccountable births. Obviously, the kidnapping scenarios or the abduction scenarios, missing time, headaches, internal organ failure or internal organ harm that was done to it, even that of the brain, which obviously is probably the most important organ that you need. From pilots, that were commercial airline pilots, private airline pilots, to military pilots. They released all that. They're releasing it all, everything that's coming out, what's gonna come out next week is all staged and planned for a next series of events. There's another series of events, everything, if you listen to me enough, I will tell you that things are event-driven. One event drives another event. A conflict will occur in between events and it will push the narrative to be wrote for the next series of events. That's how these things occur. So what we're gonna see is a series of narratives about the alien disclosure for a reason, for a purpose. All these things align together. If you listen to Prophecy Watchers, and you watch the latest Tom Horn interview on Prophecy Watchers, great show by the way. I got to meet some of the guys there at the Timothy Albarino Birthright Conference. If you listen to Dr. Horn, he'll tell you that between Apophis coming and 2030, the 2025 agenda, and a lot of the other alien disclosures, they are definitely shifting gears for what some people would say is the revelation of aliens coming to save the planet and then them being accepted. The Catholics already say this at the Vatican. The Pope has already said that he would baptize aliens. The papal already pays for the Lucifer telescope. So, you know, I mean, the Vatican is probably the most well-researched and funded organization on earth looking for aliens, looking for an excuse to say that they're looking for aliens as well, by the way. I don't believe everything that you've been told. So, real quick, to get back into this. Let me see. Among other related topics, the hearing will discuss a nine-page 2021 report on unidentified aerial phenomena. Of the 144 unidentified aerial phenomena sightings between 2004, 2021, the document writes that officials were only able to identify one reported UAP or UFO with high confidence. The others remain unexplained. No shit, they remain unexplained, that's what the U stands for. That's our Congress. The hearing will stream on the House Intelligence official YouTube channel. Ooh, they have their own YouTube channel. With coverage beginning at 7 AM on the day of the hearing. With the new proliferation of SpaceX launches, thanks to Elon Musk, SpaceX, the cosmos and their infinite possibilities are at the forefront of the public psyche. They use that word psyche for a reason. I firmly believe this is psychological warfare, that's what the CIA does great at. And they really do a good job at it. And this, this is, this is being geared towards a group of people, a majority of group of people who are facing depression, anxiety, suicide, who are afraid of what's happening in the world, they don't have strong moral leaders that they can lean upon as mentors. And so they look to this idea of the space brethren coming back and fixing everything. There is an entire group of people out there like that, that are part of this new age alien religion, who will say that the grays or the tall whites, the Nordics or whoever it is, is the space brothers or space fathers, and they're coming here to teach us how to be better people or better beings in the universe, or whatever lie they wanna give us. There's, there's a whole group of people out there like that. In an interview with NPR, technology history, Kate Dorsch highlighted the fact that the UFO lore is a uniquely American phenomenon. That's a damn lie. Go to South America and see how unique that is. Brazil is all about UFOs. And according to what me and Timothy Albarino were talking about, some pretty horrific attacks from UFOs, like UFOs actually hunting down people. Here, here's another quote from Dorsch. "Of course, we will never have complete sighting data because not everyone reports." Nope, probably not. "But it is fair to say that Americans seem more willing to talk about their experiences than people in other places in the world." I mean, we have YouTube now, so I don't believe that. Dorsch said that the other countries and cultures are more likely to ascribe unexplained sightings to be advanced technologies from Earth-based militaries. Why are they not? Why are they not? Most of them are. Most of them are. Once again, we have people who are going to tell you what they are and what they aren't. For example, UFO sightings in the 50s and 60s in Germany very rarely had the sort of alien extraterrestrial bend. Instead, Germans saw the things they couldn't explain and assumed that the American or Russian technology had created it, and that the global superpowers were testing new kinds of war technology over their skies. So there are, there is commentary from fixed-wing pilots within World War II, within the German warlock, the, the German military, who would tell you that they saw what the American fighters called foo fighters. They saw UFOs as well, didn't know what it was, and both of them would say, hey, we thought it was you. No, we thought it was you. But between the Nazi bell and about 1,000 different prototypes that the Nazis were working on for the flying machines that they had, between the flying wing, which is where we get the B-2 Spirit bomber from, they had all different types of stuff. And according to certain people, the Nazis were saying that they were getting their technology by delving into their séance, and from there, aliens were telling them how to build this technology between their advanced propulsion with rocketry, with Dr. Werner von Braun, who was, you know, the father of NASA, all the way to some, I can't remember the two brothers, but they were some of the most leading mechanics that were out there and engineers that were out there. Germany was leading the way for years in all different types of propulsion technology. And I, I postulate that if, I was stealing that word from Timothy Albarino, he's not the only one that gets to say it. I think that had Germany not gone into war mode for another five years, we may not have beat Germany. We may not have beat Germany, had Germany laid low for another five years, we probably wouldn't have had a, a military answer for them. Their rocketry was so advanced based off the America Bomber project. If you don't know what that is, look up the America Bomber project, or better yet, go to the AmericanMedictatShow.com and scroll down, you'll see the entire, I think it's eight or nine-part series that I broke down of Nazi Germany. If you want education, that's a good one. They were creating technology, these super long-range bombers, gigantic aircraft, to hit New York City with what they were creating at the same time was an atom bomb. We got to it first though, but they were also tinkering with it. So they were gonna hit New York City with the bomb, but they needed the plane to go from Europe to America. No one had that flight capability yet, that's why we used aircraft carriers during World War II. Aircraft carriers now is, it's really, it's a, it's a lame duck technology, cuz it's a sitting duck technology at the same time. It can bring a lot of firepower, but we have the ability, like the B-2 bomber can travel 6,000 miles with one fueling, and then if you refuel it mid-air, it'll go 10,000 miles, it'll go around the entire world to drop a payload. Nothing else can do that, except UFOs. And, you know, they, they were already creating amazing type of technology when you look at it. Dr. Werner von Braun, the bastard that he was, he created some of the first multiple, I guess you could say, re-entry vehicles, and also the multiple-stage rockets, where you had, you know, one primary rocket and then a booster, and then the other booster. And that was being developed to hit New York City. Alright, so that's, that's plain history, you can go and look that up. So when they, they start talking about the 50s and 60s technology, man, the Germans were way more advanced. They were probably like 20 years, 30 years advanced than what we were. And I also find it interesting that after 45, after the ending of World War II, and then we have all of Operation Paperclip, which I think was 45, 46, 47, we have the Roswell crash, and in 47, we have about 800 UFOs that were spotted in America that year. At the same time, starting about the late 40s to 50s, right there at 50, that's when you had Operation Mockingbird, that's when you had quite a few other clandestine CIA-based operations with LSD, with all different types of pharmaceuticals, psilocybin mushrooms, severe alcohol. Everything was about mind control then, and opening up the third eye with the new age rules of war. And also the, you know, the whole UFO thing. It, it was from the 50s to 80s, when you look at the technology that came out, it's staggering, the things that came out. And we based a lot of our technology now off of the TV shows and the comic books, and then the technology that was proposed from the 50s, 60s, 70s and 80s, it's coming to life now. So what about the technology that was then being created in the 90s? It's already been alive, it's been around, and we're highly advanced in some of our propulsion technologies. That's what I'm saying, like, they, they lie to us half the time about the capabilities of what we have. Think about this, when we talk about capabilities, in the 1930s, the Nazi Germany was probably the leading country at that point in time in commercial airliners. They were probably the leading country in commercial airliners. Of course, the German warlock, which would be Adolf Hitler, disguised the Luftwaffen military buildup of their air force by saying it was for commercial airline purposes. But we're still flying, we're still flying around in the same double-propelled engines on planes from the 1930s designs to now. There's never been an advancement, ever. Does anyone else find that to be strange? I don't, it's all done for a reason. Let's get back into the article, I can talk for hours. Alright, so for example, UFO sightings in the 50s and 60s in Germany very rarely had the sort of alien extraterrestrial bend, we already went over that. Instead, Germans saw things they couldn't explain and assumed that they were American-Russian technology. The American discussion on UFOs will come to a new head when lawmakers come together next Tuesday. It'll be the first open hearing on the subject since 1970. We've had this information for decades, generations. Why now? Always ask yourself, why now? Why now does the government talk about this? Why now does the government care? Are there not other things happening around the world? Potential World War III, famine and pestilence across the world, potential economic downturn in America, which could be the collapse of the dollar or the collapse of the economy worldwide. Like, we have more important shit to talk about. But you want to make the world hone in on you, and you're gonna tell us about the UFO stuff that you've known for 30 years? Cool, it'll make for good TV. The problem is, mainstream media is gearing up for this. They're gonna run specials and have offshoot episodes, and then, you know, all the different main lighter channels are gonna have their own little interviews and episodes off of it, and they're gonna build upon this and build upon this until eventually there will be a need and a good reason to have UFOs expose themselves to us, whatever they be. Aliens, angels, hybrids, I don't care, I don't care. You know, cuz most likely, it's not gonna be for our benefit. Most likely. I haven't seen one benevolent thing this government has done yet, or China, or WHO, or the World Economic Forum, or the UN, or NATO, or Russia, or Ukraine. It has all been malevolent. All of it. We, the people, suffer for these people's actions. Be prepared, stay prayed up. Get off your excuse, get in shape. Things are getting weird. Things are getting weird, things are getting stupid weird. So, you know, I can't make this stuff up, I just read it every day. The only thing I can tell you to do, cuz a lot of people ask me this at Tim Albarino's conference, what can we do to prepare? I tell you, that's how you prepare. Get close to God. Best preppers manual in the world, Bible. Best preppers manual in the world, Bible. Read it, don't just let it sit on your desk. Uh, make sure you stay in your prayers, be asking for, uh. For direction and discernment from God, that's one thing I'd definitely be doing. I'd ask, uh, God where it is that I'm supposed to go if something happens and give me a group of people that I can align with. Uh, but also, there's an obvious famine hitting the world and this country. So continuously stock up on food, worst case scenario, you eat it. Alright, and I know it's probably detrimental to me. I don't care if you, if you go to my website and go, and go through the My Patriot Supply to buy food. Uh, they probably don't like it when I say stuff like that, but I don't care, I don't, I didn't get into this job. Um, to get rich. I'm not going to get rich doing what I'm doing, it's just not gonna happen. Especially since I refuse to be bought and paid. So, I don't care if you go to the Dollar Tree or Dollar General. Uh, or Walmart to get your food, just have food. Because if you don't, the government uses it as a weapon. If you've never seen people starving. You'll be surprised at what people will be willing to do to feed themselves and their children, so. Be an asset for yourself, for your family, for your country and prepare accordingly. I'm not saying take a mortgage out and buy every tactical thing that's in the shelf. Prepare accordingly. Seek God if you need it, okay? If you need some really good prepping instructions, ready-made resources, call Bob Griswold and ask him. Bob will walk you through it, Bob's probably one of the best men I know, Bob will walk you through it, he won't steer you wrong. That's all I really got. Uh, if you did go to Timothy Albarino's Birthright Conference and you met me, it was a pleasure meeting you. Uh, I love hanging out with the people. Uh, I'm a people person. I'm not a celebrity, don't wanna be a celebrity, don't wanna think I'm a celebrity, will never be a celebrity. Um, um. That's not me, uh, I like to hang out with people, the, the fans, I'm a fan, so I mean, it's. It's, it's lunatic, just ludicrous when I think of it. Uh, I'm no different than anybody else, I just have different experiences. And, uh, you know, once again, that's all of our strengths, one, but probably the coolest things that I, that I got to do while I was at the conference was hang out. With new people, make new friends. Um, you know, get new people into this recognition of mine that I'm creating. And just get motivated to do, you know, new stuff, fun stuff, so. That'd be the thing that I'll leave you with. Get off your ass, go do something fun, stay in shape, don't sit inside and die. You know, uh, God made a playground, a, a field full of, uh, wonders out there in this world and they're in the wilderness. They're not in the cities, they're not in the suburbs, they're in the wilderness. Go for a hike, do you some good. That's all I got, signing off. See you later.